Okay, today we have two presentations. The first one will be by Riverside County Health Department, and the second one will be by the Temecula Valley Hospital. So first, we will hear from... Oh, do we have any questions now? Forget it. I'm a little confused right now. Okay, Riverside County Health, please, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jose Arbayo. I'm the spokesman for the Riverside County Department of Public Health. I have a very brief presentation and we'll make it available for questions. I think many questions will probably ask. At public health, we are tracking cases. At this point countywide, we have 59 cases. Throughout the county, we have six deaths. All of the deaths have occurred in Coachella Valley. As we started weeks ago, the majority of the cases were in the Coachella Valley. But just as we have expected, the cases have began to stretch into the western part of the county, from Riverside, excuse me, western area, and now down into southwest, which includes Temecula, Marietta, Lake Elsinore, Wildemar, Marietta, Menifee. And so, at this point, we are continuing to expect an increase in cases countywide as our testing continues to grow. As many of you know, we have started community testing at the Lake Elsinore Storm Stadium. Just this weekend, we had more than 400 people tested. We had another day today. I think we actually hit 300 today using the online and the 800 number for those that set appointments. As we are, as we continue to track cases and illness, we are expecting what we are calling a medical surge. And that is the area where the impact on hospitals and other facilities are going to hit a critical point. And we're working with hospitals throughout the county to prepare for that planned surge, or the expected surge, excuse me. And as you, as you might have heard, we are building a medical facility out in, in Coachella Valley in Indian Wells, the fairgrounds there, using federal equipment. And that will start tomorrow. That will help ease some of the crutch from the expected surge. We are also, testing itself, we are now, we have enough kits to test those that we want to test now, which will be those with symptoms. We continue to increase the number of testing that we're doing at our clinics, at our community testing sites, and also at, at private labs that are also doing a lot of testing. So when you hear about a difference or a lag in actual test results as opposed to the tests that are given, one of the issues we have is that our lab now in Riverside is now, of the public health lab, we're able to do, I think the last count was 60 to 80 tests a day, process them. The turnaround time is between 24 and 48 hours. What we're finding is the labs, the commercial labs, their turnaround time is sometimes four, or five, and six and seven days, depending on the load that they have. We are hoping that eventually that the testing will turn, are the lab results will turn around quickly so that we would have a two-day turnaround, if not sooner. And our lab, our public health lab is, is working on that now to shorten the wait time. Because that is a difficult time for those who have been tested to have to wait so long. One of the things I talked about before the call was, when we report cases, there are a lot of people talking about, why isn't it that public health doesn't identify the specific cities or locations where, where our results are coming back from? What I'm thinking there is that we are very conscientious about the privacy and, and the potential harm to our clients, our patients. And so that's one issue. The other thing, what we say now is that, as I mentioned before, we have cases throughout the county. So the thought is, at least for those that get frustrated is, we ask, what would you do different if you knew the street address where a particular case was from? Would you wash your hands differently? Would you practice social distancing differently? Would you no longer cough into your elbow and sneeze into your elbow? The reason, and so the thought is, is that we believe COVID-19 is throughout the community. So regardless of whether you know what street or what location or what city the case is from, we suggest doing the same tips for protecting yourself and your family. And so that's the biggest issue for us right now, at least from a public information point of view, is trying to remain transparent, letting people know we're providing as much information as we can without making it even more difficult for cities and hospitals, municipalities that have to, they get a lot of questions from the public, and we understand that. So that's the reasoning behind it. I know there are probably more questions that you might have, and I'm here in case you have any. Thank you.
All right, so let's move to Darlene and City Council. What I'm going to do is, at the end of Darlene, I'll ask you each one by one for your questions. So if you come up with questions, write them down, and you can direct them to whichever person you need. So Darlene, take her away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. It's nice to see everybody, at least on Zoom. Appreciate that. As you know, when this hospital opened, you know, seven years ago, it was very important that we take care of the healthcare needs of this community. And that, you know, it doesn't matter if it's dealing with an earthquake or we're dealing with a national pandemic. Whatever the needs are, the healthcare of this community, that's why we're here. I wanted to spend a few minutes kind of sharing a little bit about the disease. Our next slide here. So just some basics. I don't want to assume that anybody that might be listening really understands, you know, a lot about it. I know there's a tremendous amount of information out on, you know, social media, on the news. It's kind of hard to escape this. But this is a virus. It's new. It isn't previously identified. And that's one of the reasons that it's a little scary, is it's a kind of an unknown. But just to reassure you, it does have a low mortality rate. So that's the good news. And it can have a variety of presentations. It can be very mild. Individuals may not even realize they have COVID-19. To be very severe, so we're seeing a variety of different presentation. Important to know how it spreads, person to person. And it's through respiratory droplets. And as Jose was just mentioning, you know, it could be through a cough, it could be through a sneeze. And that's why you're seeing the social distancing. Symptoms vary, and we're seeing different things here at the hospital with presentation of symptoms. But the most common would be fever, cough, shortness of breath. Those are the most common symptoms that are associated with COVID-19. So important things to protect yourself and your loved ones. Wash your hands. At the hospital, we share a safety message every day on every shift in every department of the hospital. And our message every single day is, stay calm and wash your hands. If you do nothing else, and don't remember anything else from tonight's presentation, wash your hands. And do it for a long time, you know. Come up with a creative song. You want to wash your hands for 20 seconds. And it may sound, that's not very long. But if you time yourself, that's probably longer than you've ever washed your hands in the past. Really important, don't touch your eyes, nose, or mouth. You know, so it's, it's spread through droplets. And so if you're touching something, and then you go up and touch your, your nose or your mouth, you might be spreading it to yourself. Social distancing, really important. And I really appreciate what Jose just shared about, you know, there's, there could be somebody on your street, there could be somebody in the grocery store. And that's why we have social distancing. It is everywhere in every community. So you need to protect yourself and protect your loved ones. Important to clean and disinfect frequently touched objects for the same reason. This is living for about 12 hours on objects. So if someone else has touched that, it's important to continue to wipe things down. And as I mentioned, you know, stay calm. Educate yourself on the facts. Don't get hyped up into social media. It oftentimes is not factual. We are sharing the CDC information. You see it here on the screen, as well as the Riverside County Public Health Department. We're promoting that very regularly on our website. It's on the city's website, just about every place you're going to see. Those are your sources of truth. So if you have questions, those are tremendous resources to all of you. If you're wondering what's happening and where it's happening and what the most recent information is, don't remind on those rumors. Go to the source of the facts. So what are we doing here at the hospital? And how are we protecting you and our patients? We are following all the evidence-based practices. And that changes pretty regularly. So we're in regular communication with the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, as well as the Riverside County Public Health Department. And that's where we receive our information. And sometimes it could change daily, sometimes twice a day. And we're keeping up with one of the latest treatment protocols, the latest safety protocols on how to practice. We are sharing this information with you. You are our community. We have an obligation to keep you safe and well cared for. That's why we're pushing out social media updates. Please follow us on Facebook. We're sending information out very frequently. You can follow us on our website. Follow us on the city's website, there is a link. And we're pushing out emails to the community. So if you have an email connection with us from an event that you've attended, or maybe you've been a patient here in the past and have shared your email with us, we're pushing out email information to you regarding, regarding the facts of the disease and how to protect yourself. To keep all of us safe, we have stopped visitation. We've been sending that information out. It literally breaks my heart to do this because I'm very proud of all the open visitation we've had at the hospital since we opened. But right now, there are no visitations allowed at the hospital in the emergency department or in the main hospital building. And what we encourage you to do, if you have a loved one here, is to Zoom with them, go on FaceTime, talk with them. They're lonely and they need you to reach out to them. So we're happy to set that up on our end. If you have a loved one here in the hospital, make sure that you connect by cellphone, by phone. We're happy to coordinate that for you. And one of the issues we've had at the, at the hospital is a shortage of supplies. For that reason, we're practicing conservation measures. And what I mean by that is, we're very careful about all the protective equipment that we have in the hospital and how we're utilizing it. We're literally doing inventory multiple times during the day to make sure we have adequate supplies to keep our, our staff safe, keep our physicians safe. And that's one of the reasons that yesterday we pushed out a press release in combination with the City of Temecula on the website of items that we are in need of. We have reached out and applied for many different sources of supplies. The national stockpile has not provided any supplies to the hospital as of yet. And we are hopeful that we will receive those supplies. So right now, we're operating on very limited inventory. Be assured, we have the supplies that we need right now, but we need to prepare for the surge that Jose mentioned earlier this evening. So we've got a number up on the screen. If you would like to donate supplies or you are a business that has supplies, there's a phone number to call, and we'll make arrangements to either pick up the supplies from you or make arrangements for you to deliver them to the hospital. We ask that you not just show up with the supplies because we've got to make sure that we have the arrangements to receive those. And the list of the supplies that are in need, our personal protective equipment predominantly, things like masks and gloves, cleaning equipment. All of these supplies are listed out on the City of Temecula's website. As I mentioned, we huddle a lot here at the hospital doing safety huddles, to keep the communication up with our physicians, with all of our care providers, all the first responders. We're meeting several times a day to make sure everyone is safe and we have the information that we need. We are on a disaster command. We have an incident command center that's running 24 hours a day where we're constantly updating on what needs to be taken care of for our patients. To do that, we have segregated our patients. And so in the emergency room, we have two different areas. One area is for individuals who present with symptoms of COVID. We don't know whether they have it or not, but they might be at high risk. They've either traveled to another area internationally, they've been on a cruise, those types of risk factors. They may have symptoms of the flu, you know, a high fever, a cough, shortness of breath. Those individuals are segregated and treated in a separate area of the emergency department. Individuals who are presenting with, you know, bumps and bruises, a stroke, a heart attack, other things that we take care of, are in a completely separate area away from those who may be infected. We're doing the same thing inside the hospital. So we have specific areas in the hospital where we're treating individuals who've either tested positive or at high risk, and we're waiting for those results. Because as Jose shared, it may take us several days to get those results. And we keep those patients separate from the rest of the patients in the hospital. So that's important to keep everyone safe here. I just wanted to share this in closing. I thought this was really appropriate for Mr. Rogers. And I think it really speaks well to the community. The outpour of support for our hospital has been tremendous. We've started to receive donations, which we appreciate. Really important that we respect and, and honor those first responders that are here. So I appreciate the recognition of our physicians, of our staff, of everyone that's here taking care of the patients. They're on the front lines, and this is a time to be courageous. So appreciate all the help that we're receiving. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you so much, too. Okay, Mayor Protem Edwards, do you have any questions? You're muted. Unmute, yeah.
There you go. I've heard, and I know you hate that phrase, "I've heard", but I've heard that you can use the same masks that dentists use or the face shielding that dentists use. And how about the disposable gowns? Is that true? Can you use it, like, can dentists donate if they have extra, you know, if they have extra inventory?
Yes, absolutely. There are a variety of different types of masks, depending on the situation, the type of patient we're caring for. But certainly, the masks that are used in a dental office, we would certainly appreciate, as well as the gowns.
And then I've also heard that, that respirators are the same as the kind that commercial painters use or construction workers who are dealing with hazmat, and that, that they're available at, you know, not necessarily hardware stores, but at equipment supplies or maybe even at Home Depot or others. Do you know anything about that? Is that true? Because what I'm thinking is, if it's true and we can use them, people will go and buy them and donate them.
We go frequently shopping ourselves. Usually the shelves are empty because there's a lot of hoarding going on in the community. And that's how we're reaching out. And we've had individuals from the community have donated because they had a stockpile, because they went and raided, you know, Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever. So now those are starting to come in, which we appreciate. But yes, all of those are very valuable to us, and we can certainly use them.
Okay, okay. So we can all put out, you know, emails and direct people to the city website?
Yeah.
You can see the list. That's all.
All right, Councilmember Nigar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Darlene, thank you for, thank you both for a very good presentation. The question that keeps coming up the most about all this, and there's so much uncertainty and so much information up there, it's overload, but people are asking, are there any cases in Temecula? Now, I know that you're probably going to be prohibited from getting into any specifics, but to the degree that you can, can you speak to that?
I think I'm going to let Jose respond to that because I think just him restating what he shared before would be really important for the community to hear.
Councilman, I, I understand what the, when you, when you get that question. And I can tell you, as a former reporter, it would be driving me nuts if I had to deal with somebody like me right now. Because I understand the desire to want information. The problem is, in a lot of cases, is that, that information in the context of a health crisis is not beneficial. Because as I said before, we're trying to protect the confidentiality of our patients. But at the same time, as a healthcare issue, the message stays the same, whether it's somebody who lives on your block or somebody who's just in within a city, within city limits. Again, it's things like washing your hands and coughing into your arms, trying to do the social distancing. If the presumption is that people in your neighborhood might have it, then the presumption would be that you would act a certain way to protect yourself and your family. And I know, I guess, like I said, it's frustrating for some. But like I said, we have provided some information regarding the regions that it's in. Temecula and Marietta, Menifee, Lake Elsinore, Wildemar are in the same region. And you can see that the numbers for southwest are beginning to grow. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of the answer we're giving now.
Well, yeah, you've answered the question to the degree that you could. And that's all I, I asked for. Do we have a number for southwest Riverside?
I do, and I apologize, I don't have it handed to somebody in the notebook. But I know if you look on our map, which is, we have a map that we have as part of our website. And I think it's www.rivcoph.org/coronavirus. And there's a map there. I, I don't want to give you the wrong number, but I know it's growing. I think it's something in the neighborhood of seven. And so that number is actually, you know, we went to 59 today. I think a week or two ago, we were barely at 20. And so again, as I, as I mentioned, a lot of the cases started out in Coachella Valley, and now they've, they've grown into the western part of the county, which we knew was going to happen.
So my last question, and it's a quick one. Will, as far as southwest county is concerned, will you also be reporting if the numbers drop?
Yes, well, we're, and thank you for reminding me. We're going to start a feature tomorrow just on, on what we call people recovering. Those that have taken, had the disease and are now fully recovered, we're going to start tracking that number because I, I think our public health officer, Dr. Cameron Kaiser, mentioned that the other day, we're tracking deaths. Why aren't we tracking those that survive? Because it's just as important that the public know that this is something that's survivable. And as Darlene said, the, the actual rate of mortality is quite low.
Thank you, I appreciate the answers. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Ron.
Hi, good evening. Thank you both for your presentations tonight. Darlene, I have a quick question for you, and maybe the county can speak on this as well. I know contingency planning is an issue for a lot of the hospitals and regions. You mentioned in the Coachella Valley that you're establishing some sites as sort of overflow and federally funded, you know, sort of hospital areas. What are we doing for, for Temecula in that event? You know, we don't obviously need it yet or now, but in the event that we have a surge that exceeds the hospital's capacity, what are, what are we working toward? And is there anything the city can do to help?
Jose.
Oh, I think they were asking you about Temecula, Temecula Hospital specifically. I can tell you what, a little bit about what we're doing in the desert. The material that's being brought into Riverside County from the federal government is not all going to be used in Coachella. Part of that's going to be used in the western part of the county. I think the facility we're looking at in Coachella will be 125 beds, and then the other 125 will be placed in western Riverside County as a way to offset the expected surge. The exact location of that facility that, or where, where the materials will be used is still being worked out. But I know that it's arriving here in the, in the valley, in the, in the county. So pretty soon, we'll be locating somewhere in the western part of the county to ease the crunch in some of the area hospitals.
I think from the hospital's perspective, you know, some of the recent developments in the, in the region, I think will be very helpful. For example, the new rehab hospital that opened in Marietta, they'll be, you know, right now, they are licensed for acute rehab. But during this type of a disaster emergency, we can get permission to use those beds for regular medical surgical beds. So I think that'll be probably the first step in our area is, you know, are there bed availabilities in those types of settings in the skilled nursing facilities, you know, creating those into regular hospital beds. We're also increasing our capacity here because we can do things like convert recovery rooms into beds, operating rooms into bedrooms, those types of things, to increase our internal capacity before we would do that. But that is, I'm the next step.
So, so can I just maybe reach out to the city manager here on this? And, and maybe our, our folks with the tourism as well? And, and there's probably a couple of good locations that maybe we could find, just to give them a heads up, that we'd like to have those conversations perhaps about, you know, potential for surge capacity? And, and just to get in front of it in case we need it? And whether that's, you know, at a local hotel or, you know, convention center or whatever the, the case may be, if there's a quick turnaround, at least we'll have, you know, a handful of folks that we've already contacted and, and worked with to be able to identify that opportunity if it's, if it becomes an issue.
We can begin that.
Thank you. Thank you, Darlene. And just as a side note, I wanted to mention, you know, I unfortunately had to take my mom to the emergency room this past weekend. It was not COVID-related, totally unrelated. She's a registered nurse, and both her and I were just 100% impressed with how the hospital is operating right now, the procedures and policies that you have in place to protect not just the patients, but the staff as well. So just from sort of a firsthand experience, right now, you guys are doing an amazing job, and we're glad to have you as part of our community.
Thank you, I'll share that with the team. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Schwank.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Darlene, and Jose. I really appreciate the presentation tonight. Quick question. If someone were to want to get tested that wasn't showing any symptoms, are they even, is that something that's possible? And a few people reach out and say, well, what would I do if? What are some of the options for people living in Temecula?
Well, Darlene, I, I'll let you answer after me because I can explain what we do from the county level. The people who are we doing at the community testing sites, both here and at Indian Wells, we ask that they, they get screened. We ask that they are, they be symptomatic, one of the symptoms, fever, shortness of breath, or some other illnesses or symptoms. The thing is, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Darlene, if you're testing while you're healthy, you're, you're really not, it's a point-time test. And so it's going to show that you probably don't have it, which would be expected. You, you can have it and be non-symptomatic, but generally, it, it isn't the case. So, and on the other side, if you know that testing materials are in short supply, we're hoping to get the test kits and, and the testing done for those who we believe actually could benefit, and, and we need to know right away for. And so we encourage people to, to sign up online or to call the 800 number we've set up. And they'll screen. But again, our thought is that those that essentially are healthy really don't need to be tested at this point. It could be a time when we actually do, are able to test the general public quite easily. I think that's still a bit away.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the question because we're receiving, you know, probably a thousand calls a day at the hospital with people wanting to be tested. So it would really be helpful to get that information out to the community that we, we don't readily test anyone. You know, the hospital does not perform the test, you know, here locally that's sent out to an outside lab. But because of the shortage of testing kits, we're only testing individuals who meet all the high-risk criteria that I shared previously. So someone presenting, for example, to our emergency room who has traveled out of the country, been on a cruise, you know, has a fever, has been exposed to somebody else that's positive for COVID, you know, has all the different signs and symptoms and history, that individual most likely be tested. Others who don't have all of that, you know, that have a sniffle or a cough, but they're just frightened, we're not going to be testing them because the testing resources are so limited. I believe we've done about, in the last month, we've probably done about 90, 90 so tests total out of all the thousands of patients who have presented here to our emergency room. Just to give you an idea, we're not testing very frequently because you have to meet all those different requirements. So don't run to your hospital emergency room expecting to be tested. Really call the county, make arrangements, make an appointment.
Yeah, I think that's important to know, that we don't want everyone flocking to your hospital to get tested. I guess one last thing. Darlene, how is your staff holding up?
I guess one last thing, Darlene, how is your staff holding up? I think it's very important that they're healthy and, and how are they holding up?
Actually, they are doing really, really well. The, the staff really appreciate the outpouring of support from the community. We're getting a lot of posts on social media. We had food donations, even this evening, we had one group brought in like forty boxes of pizza and then we had another group show up with In-N-Out. It's wonderful. You know, we have over a thousand employees here. We have about four hundred physicians. And then we have, you know, our residents as well that are in training here. So there's a lot of individuals that are on the front lines that need the support from the community. So really important to, to reach out to them, send messages on social media. I share all of those with the staff and the teams, recognizing them for all the hard work. It can be frightening to be on the front lines and so it's important that we continue to support them.
Of course, very important. Thank you both for doing everything you do for our community and our region. I appreciate the presentation, thank you again.
Thank you.
So Stu, one more for Mary Ann. So Darlene, I've gotten a number of emails from Rotary Club of Temecula and other organizations. Wilson Creek, Winery has put together like an action team and they're all asking, what can we do? What can we do? And it's difficult when we can't gather in groups and, you know, we're supposed to stay at home. But, so you just gave us an idea about, you know, bringing, providing pizza and things like that to the hospital. What else can some of these groups do to help?
I'm sure Wilson Creek, they'd love to have wine here.
Yeah.
I think another way that the community can really help is through blood donation. Because of the, the fear of going out, a lot of the blood donation centers were closed throughout the country. Thousands and thousands of people stopped donating blood. And so now there's a severe blood shortage, which is going to impact all of us. So today, we hosted a blood drive at the hospital. Our wonderful mayor, Stu Kane, was one of the individuals who donated blood today at the hospital. So really promoting out to the community, watch for those blood drives in the community, support those. I know the City of Temecula is going to be having their own blood drive coming up. So watch for those and spread that word, that would really be helpful.
Oh, that's great. And then I also got a, an email today from Emily Falapino over the new CEO of The Chamber. And she said The Chamber is becoming a hub for local businesses to provide, well, and she said anyone, you don't have to be a Chamber member, so it's individuals and businesses for support and resources. And I don't know, if you touch base with The Chamber, you know, they, I'm sure that they'll be able to do something for the hospital with as many members as they have. So that might be a great resource for you too.
Yep, Emily and I are in touch just about every day.
Okay, good, yes, she's awesome. Okay, thank you, Stu.
Okay, well, thank you both for a great presentation. There's, there's just a lot of need and want for information. So I think this will be very helpful for a lot of people who are out there wondering what's going on. So thank you, Jose and Darlene both.
Thank you for having us.